So. Of this issue. First nation. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order at. One. Oh, one. Um, let's prove the agenda to start with the recommended the committee poll meeting agenda for February the eighth twenty twenty three be. As circulated. Sorry, I should have asked, are there any late items? Hey. Um, second or quarter. All in favor? Okay, adoption of the minutes, recommendation of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on January the twenty fifth twenty twenty three be adopted. Anyone? For. Pam? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, carry. All right, we're right onto business arising. The B C energy step code overdue, Kenny, we're going to turn it over to you. Oh, sorry, and before you start, we don't have mics up here, so if we can be loud and clear for the folks that are in the gallery. As well as on the screen. Sorry, Kenny, yours.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Kenny, yes, I am a huge volunteer for that, just seeing you guys briefly overview of. Step code, we will review the energy conditions regarding. And raise that perfect, uh, so the problem for the energy energy efficiency as a requirement of B C building code of two thousand. Since that beginning, desire of the builders to have the often, they either restrictive or performance based approach. For co compliance, the problems that enacted the B C energy step code as regulation and on April sixth two thousand seventeen, the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. By achieving net zero ready goals as a minimum performance apart line residential starting by twenty thirty two. The U C energy step code will be a mandatory compliant. Within the B C building code, that will be a set a five step approach to improve the energy efficiency of new home construction by doubling overall performance requirements. Every five years, currently we are on step two, uh, which is ten percent more effective or sorry, ten percent more efficient than the requirements came into effect in two thousand fourteen. Step three will be twenty percent more efficient, step four will be forty percent, and goal being step five. Step three is sent to come into effect sometime within twenty. Apparently, the law will not keep deadline for the change. Here's how the B C energy debt for work. To achieve a lower debt, builders and design professionals can rely on conventional building designs and terrible near to feeling techniques. They incrementally incorporate some key elements into design, building envelope, mechanical equipment. Builders and designers only recommended collaborate with energy advisors. To select them over cost effective way to meet the requirements. For part nine, step four, um, are the upper steps at the beginning, sorry, marks the beginning of the upper steps. To achieve the upper steps, builders and designers will need to adopt a more integrated approach to building, construction, and design. They need to incorporate substantial behaviors of building design, layout, framing techniques, mechanicals, like system selection, and materials. These techniques material can be more costly and challenging, but additional training and expertise. The top steps of the B C energy debt code equate to that zero ready homes, which is eight percent more efficient than the current bills today. Here's how the benefits of B C energy debt code. The occupant benefits, building the built through an entire intermediate condition, these standards provide more benefits to those who live and work. And occupy them. Occupants often prefer these buildings as they improve comfort by better managing temperature, improve health by better managing fresh air throughout the building. And reduce noise through better. And air pipe test. And require less energy in living, uh, occupants lower their energy bills. The environmental benefits. Environmental benefits are based on increased performance of the homes. And which play a key role in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which will help the province meet their climate action. Economic benefits. The B C of the province of B C and hope that the energy debt code. Could help make the province of buildings after more competitive and potentially open up new economic development across our opportunities. Province has already agreed building design and construction leader, both with the highest performing buildings in North America. Industry benefits. The B C energy debt code gives builders a equal level of consistency on energy efficiency between local government. Province or the coding act, the code provided flexibility to provide innovative cost. Created a complex solution that allows them to incorporate any heading technologies as they become available. They have a set of consistent path or future updates beneath the building code, giving builders the potential to apply to head on energy operations. The local government benefits, the local governments, the B C energy debt code offers simple and efficient standards for building energy performance. It aligns nicely with many of the existing energy performance programs that builders are currently familiar with, and may also help that local governments achieve their energy act. Although there will be many positives regarding the upcoming changes to the B C energy step code, there will be a few trade offs. So, S, increase in construction costs. The province's cost entry studies expect a cost construction increase of point five percentage by. That means step four, these costs are associated with the increased insulation value, higher rated windows, the work and involvement in the energy price along with their associated. Additional training. One of the difficulty challenges of the code changes is the need for both building officials and builders to. Education and very, very training to become well aware of new codes. For building officials, this means mandatory education, so seminars will be divided by the U C. For builders, organizations that locally such as the issue of construction industry for buildings, and the builders association. Where do you do, I have many education centers, the difference. The builders that are operating, working, maintain educational education for people. The design limitation, the upper steps, designers must pay careful attention to the amount of location of cleaning. And window blazing and design of bellies to limit to mitigate heat loss as much as possible. They must all consider the performance rating. At of the mechanical equipment, which will limit the type of system that can be used in new construction. What has been done to prepare? Industries, they will understand that the homeowners association, sending interior, providing information to their member group. Preparating. The industry, the building department staff prepared for the implementation of step three through education seminars. And webinar sourced by the U V C specifically for building officials to ensure we are prepared to meet the upcoming changes. Additional training will be completed by district staff throughout the campaign free to ensure we're prepared to meet that change. If council chooses to adopt an early implementation of the B C energy step code, an amendment to building bylaws, seven hundred and thirty will be required while the six month public consultation process. That would currently preparing specific events to the building bylaw to bring forward accounts. Consideration once council has determined how they would like to receive step code. We anticipate the province will confirm an implementation date within twenty twenty three, and when point seven will become the minimum level. Summarize it all. Within twenty twenty three, step code, step three of the B C energy step code will be to be implemented for all. It means all new part nine structure will be required to be designed. To our performance design, place of traditional requirements. Switch from restrictive to performance method will trigger the need to have new constructive model and expected by a certified energy advisor. To have new to ensure that the structure was still still compliant with performance requirements. As a method to ensure that are consistent with the original model, this P A will need to perform. A lower door test at different stages of construction to ensure that there is still, or there is no leakage or identified as early as possible in the construction process. Any questions?
Counselors, any questions?
I'm not going first, but I have a lot to say on.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Pam, chair. Kenny, would you? I sat in on that planning development where it was discussed, and I got the sense that. Um, that I think you mentioned that a lot of the local construction. Groups are already kind of quite. In tune with and preparing for it. Uh, locally even. Um. So. Yeah, so I mean, that's a big factor. Um, I also heard that we had already in this community, a trained. Uh, advisor, energy advisor. Which is a plus. So it feels to me like. We're, we're well, kind of well on our way to being ready. Um, I don't know, that's my feeling, I heard a lot of. Discussion and I understand too that. There will be increased costs as we move up, but um. I also heard Scott talk about an integrated project that came in, you know, on time and on budget. That there are ways maybe of mitigating some of those additional costs, so I'm just going to throw that out to start things off and. Ian can.
Yeah, no, 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 I wouldn't do that, no.
Art? I think. On their minds, so why don't, you know what, why don't I just break the ice here? So obviously, we're getting mandated to do this one more thing that, you know, is being put on our plate. And no one is happy about, and most people that build a house right now are looking for the most energy efficient ways to build a home anyway, they're looking for those. Gaze windows, an extra insulation, and I know when we built our home, we were looking for that as well, and you know, proper insulation and. Yes, we are in a green or in a green town, we use electricity to heat our homes, so and that's not inexpensive, so of course we do. Uh, look for ways to mitigate some of those costs. Um, I'm just going to share an example of a mandated item ten years ago when we built our house from your B C, B C Hydro. I think mandated it, and we had to install a separate electrical room in our home. So B C Hydro could come in and check that space. Once or twice a year. We have not seen B C Hydro in ten years, they have not. Poked their nose in that little room that probably added, I don't know, fifteen thousand dollars onto our construction cost, so I'm. We keep adding these mandates, but. Following up on them and enforcing them, I mean. But in this case, it's a little bit different because as building inspector, you'll be. You'll be the guy leading the charge as far as the building goes, so, but. Just wanted to toss that out there, go ahead, Gordon.
Just wanted to break the ice.
Yeah, I'm an icebreaker.
I, you know, I, I wanted this to come to council, like it came to the planning committee and we wanted to. See if we were going to vote to vote in for the council, but I think all council should be involved in it. And I, I, you know, I think the step code is great in some circumstances. But we're trying to build affordable housing, and every time you make a step code for affordable housing, the price. And they say point five percent or fifteen percent is probably more than, more like thirty percent or more. But I just don't, I think it's new, it's not mandatory, I think we kind of wait and see and see how it goes. Um, I think we, if, if it is going to become mandatory somehow. Affordable housing can't be a part of it because you cannot build affordable housing at right now, and if we add this on top of it. It's going to be even more difficult, but, or maybe there's another. Aspect that the province is waiting on, and that's why they're trying to figure out how they're going to do affordable housing and also implement the step code at the same time, so. I think that's maybe why they're holding off and trying to figure out how to do it, and I think, I mean, yeah, we should, we'll probably keep an eye on it, we're trained our staff to work towards it, I think. Homes that are over five hundred thousand, you know, could be implemented into this, into the step code, but. Trying to build affordable housing and keep adding these extra costs for developers is, uh, it's, it's impossible. That's, that's my two bits.
Go ahead, counselor Bailey, unleash.
Oh, no, I, I mean, there's, I guess there's, there's a theme that I have, and it's much like these extra costs keep getting put on. I question. The value or the climate change goals on this versus the cost. And, and I think this is what we need to keep in mind, like, there's a climate change goal here, why they are trying to make buildings more efficient, it's a, it's a good goal. But like everything in life, it's never just about, you know, easy choices. The trade off with this is it does increase costs without a doubt. I don't buy the zero point five, I really don't, I think it's probably ten, twenty percent, depends how far you go up the step code. In terms of how much it's going to cost. When we are in a housing crisis. And we are, we've all talked about it, I will never support anything that adds one dime. To the cost of building housing, and the other thing we should think about when we're talking about this, we're not just talking about developers having to follow this, if you want to put a coach house. On your property, you will have to follow this, and I don't see. The value of us being ahead of where the province wants to go with this. Um, and that's what we're really talking about here, is actually us implementing this sooner than what the provinces is, is mandating us to. And so I agree with Gordon. I think we should hold off, but also I think we should hold off for a whole bunch of other reasons is. We should be trying to drive down the cost of housing. Because that's the only way we're going to get to affordable, uh, housing, I mean, part of the reason why rents are going up is that the housing costs have gone up, right? And so now you're getting into a scenario, last week, they just announced that the average Canadian rent is what, top two thousand dollars? I mean. These play, these programs have a place, but they've got to be viewed with what the unintended consequences are. And to me, the unintended consequence of this is increased cost, and it's just not worth it, we've got to get people into housing. That's my priority.
Thank you, Councilor. Counselor Evans.
Thanks, um, through the chair, Kenny, you feel you're ready, uh, I think you mentioned that you, you folks are ready for this. For when it comes, you've been taking, um, houses that are being built and assessing them properly. And, um, so are you confident that it's going to be early twenty twenty three that they're going to demand step three?
Through the worship, at this point, I would have exact date, uh, there is some preliminary discussion, say that it will be happening early twenty twenty three, but I do not have any confirmed pace at this point from the province.
Okay, um, then through the chair, I, I would like to say, um. It with the given current economic climate. This change is coming, and ultimately, I think it's going to be good, but the way things are right now, I'd like to put it off as long as possible, that's my preference, because. Folks are trying to eke out a living right now, and, uh. Um, I know of people building houses, and if we could save them some dimes right now at this point in. The year anyway, um, I'd like to put off as long as possible, knowing that the change will come and ultimately will be good because no one likes changes if we're a baby, but. It's, uh, it's important to, right now, save people some dimes, I think.
Councilor Rich. Through the chair, thank you, um, I, I agree, I think the only thing, um, that I would add is that we do have an education and maybe through Scott that. You know, here are your options, and maybe this is how it helps you, so people have. Um, some information that, hey, it is coming, but maybe if you're going to stick to step three, maybe you want to go to a five. Um, and, and why, so that would be, um, my add on is, is that when we do building, you know, people come in for their permits, there is some information for them. Before we're. I think this isn't one we need to be trailblazers on.
No, I agree, and, and Kenny, because you know it's coming and you know that eventually it'll be mandated, yeah. This, I'll get you, um, it'll be mandated, you could just start planting that seed out there, you know, if somebody's putting up a bill for three years. Maybe you could, you know, let them know, okay, this is, this is the implementation that you're going to go through when you start to build in three years, so. Go ahead. Malcolm's got his hand up too. Oh, yeah, was that, sorry, Malcolm, go ahead.
Yeah, excuse me, thank you. Ah, it's cool, can we? Um, yeah, I agree with what everyone's saying, um. Let's get ready for it, maybe staff can get, go to workshops, get trained up on it, but, uh. And, and you know, and if a homeowner is building a cottage house, they want to do that. Fine, but at their discretion, we're not going to push you to promote it. And let's avoid it until it's mandatory, yeah?
Go ahead, Councilor. Um, to the chair, I don't disagree with any of what, what everyone's saying, what I would like to recommend though is that. There are new ways of approaching construction that we could be educating ourselves on, and I did present, uh, just before Christmas. Or the integrative, uh, approach to, um. Uh, building, uh, that companies are changing to do that actually brings project costs down. And, and timelines down, and I think Malcolm. Would be able to comment to that because I remember him talking about Hamloops, who is now using this I P C. Um. Uh, approach to do all their major building, and I also remember him talking about, we've got some big projects on the go, and. And the complexity of the partnerships and the complexity of the size of. Projects means that. Our, our sort of smaller construction companies are not really well equipped to manage them, so we're going to be looking at a new way of doing things, and I would. Really, I'm okay with this, but I would want us to start educating ourselves. As a municipality about how to approach construction projects differently. Because I think there's a new way of doing things that will be cheap. Thanks, and maybe what we could do is add that to our strategies. As we, as we go into our strategy sessions and we portfolio ourselves, and maybe just a counselor could be focused or two on finding, um, best practices, right? Current best practice, um, Kenny, just a quick question for you, do you think that, um. Uh, remodels will have to follow these codes too, like if someone has a, is doing some renos. Will this be coded into those renos like?
There is some flexibility regarding how to do an existing building. Uh, the code does allow for certain situation for that, and that can be exempted, so if someone is doing interior renovation, it would be required. Uh, if they were doing a small addition, say, if they were doing a substantial reconstruction of the house, then if the requirements could apply to that. But there is a little bit of discretion that can be applied from an inspector standpoint on the application of the new step code along to exist.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone else have any questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kenny, sorry. I'm not being harsh on you at all.
That's the chair. All right, so we're going to have recreation and events update, nice to see you, Amy, you have the floor.
Through the chair, could I ask me everybody? Um, so this is my first presentation to council, I thought I could give a little bit of a, an update, um, to those. Well, you do know who I am by some of the committees and stuff that I'm a part of. So as a recreational best programmer for the district of St. Louis, I also am a director of our place, she's a group. Um, like we thought is a physical literacy group that has partnered together with the community to be examined and there's a new entity. And our goal is to, um, just that, get people physical and. Literacy too, you know, going back to those. It's how to play hot squash, try bro, and all that type of stuff, so, um, because that is times now, I have a deep reading when it comes to. So we were trying to really, um, focus on that. I also fit as a member of the early childhood development table for the community round club. I also fit at the interagency table, and I'm that member of the U C R P A, for those who don't have a name, that's the Recreation and Parks Association. And I find to, um, involve in this many webinars, Zoom calls and stuff to say about what's going on in the province within. Recreation and park sector. Um, and I also work with those that are looking to book our fields and our parks for whether it be events using the stage. Using our watch car and other district assets that we have in the community, and then also work with, uh, and start looking at the C P S. All the through the permitting process, we feel they have things like their, their liquor licenses, their insurance as a place, and then we ship that all of that. Then the requisites that they need are all checked off within the municipalities request, and then from there, we present them with the permit to operate the region. For, for their sake. For their. So, um. I can't remember any of some of that. So now I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what we've done for twenty twenty two and the beginning of twenty twenty three. So the summer of twenty twenty two programs, um, this year definitely was our most popular year with our summer kids club program. We employ five summer staffs that rotated through summer designated just to the summer kids program, and then we have three instructors that rotated through the summer kids program. And we're also our designated swim instructors. So our swim lessons, so we can host up to sixteen kids in our summer kids program to maintain our, um. Our childhood, the staff ratio, and most of our days we were at max capacity, so. We start off the load the first week of July, and then the second to second week of July to both the second week of August for our. Capacity, and then we start to, uh, slow down after that. Um, we had our swim lessons, uh, this summer. And our swim lessons, um, we average about fifty to sixty kids participating in swim lessons. This was down just a little bit this year because we were forced to cancel for two weeks of one month due to the, the high water that we. Because we are one of the very few communities in Rich Conville that actually keeps water safety in our body of water, which is great. Um, we tried to include some new drop in programs this summer, but we do high water again, we weren't able to do, do a lot of these things because our beach park was not acceptable to us. Um, we tried to offer some new things this year with the skateboard camp, we tried doing an activity in fitness class, some diet hikes, some. And they've been part of the fall that due to low reputation numbers for various different reasons, we were forced to cancel those unfortunately. For our fall programs, our after school club, again, to like our summer kids club program allows for six million children per day, uh. The lowest number right now for any day. So that's how well our program is utilized, at evening today, I just had another mother who's all, she's very excited, she's just. Going with the daycare, so she's looking for childcare regarding any of her daughter that's in kindergarten, so it is definitely a, a very popular program within our community. Our dance number stayed consistent between thirty to thirty five dance enthusiasts, uh, we did cut our dance short this year because our youngster was having, uh, an unexpected baby, but. So maybe she's sort of backward this again in. And, uh, March, and we are up to about thirty. Okay. Uh, we had a suite of fall drop in programs, looked in at our field entry school, but after everything was all said and registered and people were signing up and. Motives, the school decided to do a mass renovation, so we were booted out of the gym, so, so that had an end to our programs. Our home loan class, which I do teach in house as well as a babysitting class, um, I teach in house, our home was full with eight students. And it seems to be, I have one home class at home loan, and I have to cancel babysitting, and then vice versa when I do the next, because some of those kids have aged up and now they want to be those babysitters. So I always seem to flip flop, but I always seem to manage to do at least two classes a year for both of those, for both of those courses that we do. Um, we formed a partnership with O U C last year, which was a great addition to the community. Uh, we were able to host two first, first aid courses, which they're like, I think, were very good, I think, this great because we were able to recertify our staff. Because of the years of COVID, we weren't able to, weren't able to do that, so I believe ninety five percent of our staff now are all recertified with first aid. And then we also worked with food safe, and one of those sources that we offered for the community, we were at max capacity at twelve. We are offering another one in March, and I just had a phone call from the resource center, and they'd like to beat up those positions. So people are appreciating the fact that even though they're not our programs, we are offering our space to them, and they're not having as a big talent to actively participate. So our summer events, because this was our first year, we were actually able to have events pre or post COVID. So our candidate numbers were down a bit, and they're really rocky and so on, because it does take time to build that back up. Um. Our actual most for events were moved over to Phyllis Park again due to our, our high water down at the beach park. Our fireworks, as everyone knows, is posted to the office on weekend due to high water down at the beach park, there's a theme here, it's a regular basis. But our family fun day, thank goodness, was super successful with senior staff and management council, getting close to five hundred people that day. The carnival bowl races were very well missed, and those numbers, the township numbers definitely were up from years past, and it's just one of my favorite events to do. Because everyone just gets out and has a great day, and by, okay. Changing up from bringing in the regular bounce houses and actually changing over to the family games, like we have the axel, and we have the jousting pit, and we have the tricycle race. It was really great to see not the kids enjoying those things, but actually seeing the families and. And everybody getting together and participating, so it was just a really creative thing down there, down at the beach park. And by the end of the day, it's, I know everyone's a camper, but I get. Comperers, so, so that was kind of a longstanding joke. So our ball winter activities that we had again, first year, we had our pre, uh, post COVID, sorry, we were able to have a family Halloween party, we see close to two hundred family, or two hundred people. Families and kids tricked through the, the school that day, um, it was really cozy over the precautions, we brought in the sequins staples, they participated in crafts with the kids. Kids were out dancing, they were playing different games and stuff, so it was a really nice, wholesome community event. Kids were out dancing. They were playing different games and stuff. So it was a really nice, wholesome community event. Once again, be able to have. A Christmas community light of contest. We seen about the averages what we had before. And calling can attest, I actually was prying on the vote for the district's. Because it was just so exciting to see how we prayed, local engine, we actually have this year, any other people that were actually out supporting the parade. Even when we went around to the seniors, seeing the folks that live in the temple and in the manner, be able to call actually wait and see the parade was just. Was very up, up moving after two very gloomy years of COVID. And then the CPR holiday train, the number spoke for itself, the amount of people that were out. Now they're, you know, that, that event is just, it grows every single year that we have it, so. So some of the changes that we made over the summer, it is, all I can say is Captain Hancock and Sarah Kyla, you guys are absolutely amazing. We took over a new program called Canada. And with the help of Captain, uh, we were able to create a template. And so what this template does now is. I was going and I take all of the programming and I work with all the different groups to get all the programs in. And I put all the details in and everything else. And then once I have that completed, I send it off to Sarah and Captain to make it the beautiful finished product that you guys. Say, um, by doing this now, this is a guide that people come into. Our distribution is up to six, seven hundred. Guides per season as coming that you guys.
Haven't picked one up.
Um, it is definitely on demand. We're getting phone calls from, from our local restaurants, our, our ball courses and stuff asking for us to actually. Get copies into their businesses, which I think is amazing. Um, by working with our local non-for-profit groups like the Arts Council, the seniors and that. What, what this has done is actually given the one-stop shop, but what also has done, and this is the conversations I've been having with these groups is. By having members and coordinating all these different programs, I can talk to them and say, well, the Arts Council is planning this, this, this on this weekend. And we just plan this, this, this on this weekend. We're now limiting as much as possible the overlap of programming, the overlapping of events. Which then is actually making things more successful for everybody in the community. So everyone is really liking this opportunity and they're liking being able to put the. In the guide and each, each dealer that we have are working towards having. Something different in there and more groups are coming up to us asking us to be able to promote with them. It is hard at times to, you know, when I'm having the businesses line coming through. I have to say sorry, but you know, it's definitely not for profit, but for the most part, they're very, very receptive and they understand what we're doing, so. So probably my proudest accomplishment from twenty twenty-two was our collaboration with the Sutching personations, working together with Kyle and Sean. Uh, the Sutching um Recreation Department was challenging at times, but very rewarding on their end and on my end. Um, lots of times we would have a plan in motion and then something would happen and, and we would have to change on the fly, but you know, I. I, I look forward to that. I welcome that. Makes things interesting. Um, so these pictures here are representations of the Sutching barbecue that we hosted for their, their welcoming date. That they have for their community trip. The center photo is from the actual community trip where they gathered outside of our church here. And then the last picture there is our truth and reconciliation day that we host here in Sycamore. And then quite a number of um staff and council attended their truth and reconciliation day that was held in um. In Sutching. I ended up with forty-two packed quilts. Predominantly modified by the kids from the district of Sycamore and from Sutching kids, but I'm working with the, the quilting ladies to see if we're getting that. Patch or that quilt actually created now and hopefully they'll have it for display for Aboriginal Day. And then this is just pictures of the collaboration that we did on the homeschool trip. Um, but each thank you for twenty acres and the shadow of the sick was how both, both the athlete don't offer to donate the homeschool trip for the day for us. And so we were able to take fourteen kids from Sycamore and fourteen kids from Sutching. Many of them had never been on the lake before, including kids from Sycamore. And we were able to go and find pictographs of the lake, uh, that is Gloria Morgan that's there. And so she provided um a, a Sutching. Language lesson and a drumming session and she told some stories about coyote and that. And so the kids really enjoyed the day. We cooked burgers, hot dogs. And they were up climbing on rocks, skipping the Easter egg attack. But all in all, it was a absolutely fantastic day. And then this, when we had our truth and reconciliation day. In uh September, a lot of these kids recognized each other from the truth programs and they just instantly that friends once again. So it was really cool. So for, for winter and spring, um, now that we have access back to Parkview Gym, we have two drop-in nights on Wednesday and Thursday. That takes place at Parkview Schools. One of their drop-in night, we try to rotate um the sports over there, but it seems to be a local group wants to do basketball every Wednesday. So that's what they wanna do and they're using the gym. That's what they can do and find with that. And we average between four to eight people coming out for, for that session. Our pickleball session last week had seventeen pickleballers out playing pickleball, recreation. And mix of, of, of gentle ladies out there and they, and they, they just go out and they just have fun and like they play the rules, but they're not stickler to rules and. So they have, they have a very good time. And we have one of our instructors for after-school program that now goes and looks after those programs for us. And then on Wednesday night, that by virtue of their demand, we have Mayor running our calm class. Um, even though I had to miss last week, we had twenty babies out participating in the gym. And most of those babies have actually bought the, the hundred dollar session fee. So, so right now everything's covered for expense-wise for this class. So anybody that comes in now is, is just a bonus, but that's great. Um, the rest of our programming is scheduled to start in March, predominantly after the spring break because you know that's, you know, it's hard to get programs going for that. And then the new spring rec, rec guides, sorry, is scheduled for April first. Um, we're continuing our partnership with OUC, like I mentioned, the food safe course. And the goal for recreation this year is to try to add at least one new program every, every uh season that we have. And currently I'm working with the, the PEL course. So for those who don't know, that is, that's for firearm safety. And we're trying to work on getting them in for spring and fall session. Um, spring events, we have our family day weekend that we're trying to do for next weekend. Of course, I only have two people signed up right now. So this event is a little bit in limbo, but hopefully between now and Friday, we'll, we'll get some more numbers registered. We are working with the Sycamore's Cleveland Club and the Parkview Pack to bring back our jam can, which was so popular when, when my kids were little. And uh just a shout out to Jake, the, the DOD's one dairy. He's donated sixty-four empty milk jugs. So we actually have curling um. Proper curling rocks for the kids for this, for this event. Um, our community Easter icons is taking place. So if anyone's around April eighth, I always see people come help hide eggs. And I'm working with all the local service groups such as LASS and the. Um, uh, Killen's Foundation staff to come and bring tables and, and set up craft tables as a show of their service in. And then DAPF got her. For our summer events this year for Canada Day, um, due to, you know, limited staff and, and so on within the Recreation Department. We are just gonna be focusing on the evening. So we are gonna be focusing on a family-friendly interactive entertainment company. So they will be coming in and what they are doing is they are like a circus shows. They are setting up a circus prop tent. They'll be teaching families and stuff. How to juggle, do different, various different things, bringing in some carnival games and then they have the entertainers that will be on stilts and singing. And things like that. So that will take place in the early afternoon. And then in the evening, we will turn over to the music piece of the, the event and then. Gone with it, no high water, we'll then continue on with our fireworks. We are working with Sycamore's minor hockey, hopefully to go for the road hockey piece of what was Canada Day before. And when we begin to the rest of the season, that shape the way will be hosted in the drive. They have more bodies, they have more volunteers, they have, they, they have the know-how, the knowledge of the people. And they can use a fly racer and we figured that this would be a good fit. So they are meeting with their board to discuss the options and hopefully they're back by the end of next week. About that. We'll be continuing with their family fun day weekend in August with a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And that's about it that I can find for right now. So if anyone has any questions, they're answered.
Wow, thank you, Jamie. That's awesome. Counselors, any comments?
Through the chair, I just wanna say, you're amazing. You've done so much with all of this programming. It's just in such a variety. Good work and really to see the, getting the youth, uh, Sutching and, and our youth together. It's just, it's wonderful stuff. Kudos.
Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Great job, Jamie. You've done a great job. These programs together and the rec guides and with all the assistants and staff and everything. Um, yeah, we struggled with the facilities, you know, having a place to, uh, you know, a key anchor place and we'd like to somehow come up. Figure out, figure out that for you for sure. And, uh, yeah, I just like seeing you focusing a lot on the. Inner stuff too. Uh, that's good. You know, summer kind of really takes care of itself. And there's so much to do in the summer, but it's nice to see like the braid is sort of starting to grow and, and the, uh, you know, the. The uh, see in the TP rail, bringing the train to town and that's all that. So you're doing a great job. Thank you very much. Um, just had one question on, um, is, um, you still, you're still with the Moose Mouse delegation and are they coming?
Yes, uh, their next meeting that they have planned is for next Thursday, February sixteenth. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that meeting. I have a prior commitment that night. Um, it was seven months back. Um, so they are leaving again here at seven o'clock. So if anybody would like to be there, I did suggest to um Carly that that would be. Because that's where they're trying to firm up. Um, the things that I've heard so far right now that seem to be concrete of what's gonna happen is Jake will be hosting both. And men's and ladies, um, some alternment for that weekend. I believe Shaw pause is leading after the concession for that weekend. However, it is noted that they will be bringing in. Food trucks and stuff to supplement. Uh, the Hurling Club is looking at hosting a dance of some sort. The Chamber of Commerce and Eagles are partnering together to offer the, the daytime beverage parties that will be going on. And then there is a new car club here in town that is formed and they are planning on hosting a car show for the Saturday, which is September twenty ninth. And it's really cool to be here with them because they really wanna make this family oriented. So they're working scouts Canada. To see if they can bring in those wooden kid cars that used to be quite popular and actually I'm in a competition and so on with the kids with building, racing. That sort of thing. And then they're looking at having a competition where, you know, you decorate and build your own car, cardboard or whatever different materials. So most of those things are supposed to be designated by next week. What we've told them, I, what I explained to them at the last meeting was. The drop dead date for, for us to go to using municipal property is March first, September, your street. That way if they need, if we're losing permits, maybe we spy a lot of market saving, any type of, of permits that need to come through council. That gives us enough lead time for them to go through. So all those groups are very, very aware of that.
Um, yeah, just through the chair and just to add on to that, um, I, I believe football club is also gonna be hosting a volleyball tournament as well. That weekend.
And that is the weekend before the August lawn?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to add that the, that Jake Dwyer and Sheila both requested to appear as a delegate action. So they'll be. Coming to the next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Great. Anyone else?
Sorry, Bob. I, you, and you did.
It's okay. Thank you. Uh. Jamie, um, sounds like a really busy summer coming up. Um, the um, question I had was the August long weekend, um, you talked about burgers. And there was a lot of them, right?
Yes.
Um, have, no, this is just a, an idea. Um, what if you. This year charged two dollars a burger and it went to help out something local like the Eagles or something like that. Um, I'm just thinking, you know, it's a, it's a lot, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of work. Um, and uh, I think it's wonderful that we offer that. It's still a benefit to everybody that's wants. A burger on Canada, on August long weekend and it's quite affordable. It's just, just a thought because I think it was a lot last year.
I'm gonna take that because that is kind of, that whole barbecue is, is mostly a council function. Like that's where we get to stand around and serve our constituents and, and flip the burgers and, you know, have a chat with them and they love it. So what we do is, um, we go burger by donation and we can push that even a little bit more. But if there's a, uh. A group that you want us to select, then let's just pick that group before we start the, um, the barbecue. So everyone knows that they are dropping in two or five bucks for, to whatever charity.
Yeah, and I don't have one in mind except to say that if you are doing it by donation, it does increase your donations to. To say, hey, I, I will put a five instead of a two, two knee today because it's gonna go to the. The food bank or the Eagles or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just, because that motivates people to give a little more.
Yeah, for sure it does. But it's, yeah, it's really not a fundraiser. It's an appreciation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's cool.
That's why we kind of head in that direction. So, okay.
I don't know, finish.
We'll have a couple more things. So you go ahead.
I just, just a question. Um, I noticed one of the things we don't really have up there and I. Assume what the answer is gonna be is any programming around public skates and things like that because. That's one of the things that seems to come up every year. People say, hey, when can I go do this, right?
Well, because the, the public skating is owned by the CSRD and the arena is owned by the CSRD. Um, I have approached to, to rent some ice time for various different things. Unfortunately, like I tried to do that for the unplugging play, but unfortunately. Weekend and, and I understand this because I am, I am that, that ultimate hockey mom. The weekends are prime ice time. The weekends when, when they're, that's when they put in their tournaments. That's when teams are playing. That's. So it's very difficult to find ice time that is available off the weekends. But I do agree with you and I would like to be able to see a designated slot. Be put on a weekend that families can know week after week from this time to this time, that is a good ice time. I hope even in the middle of tournaments. Contemplated in clothes and things that happened when we was little. It would be two o'clock in the afternoon, start at afternoon and they'd have to rip down their whole tournament because they have public skate record from three to four in the afternoon. And then the tournament is, you know, resumed after that because we don't control the racket center. It's unfortunately not something that.
Uh, just, I was just wondering, like, is there any way at the beginning of the season, say in the fall, we have this worked out with the CSRD? And then we can publicize when these public skates are. It doesn't necessarily have to be every time on a weekend, but maybe there's an opportunity on Tuesday night. For a couple hours. I'm just, just a thought for maybe future recruit.
And I did see actually this morning, it must have been either Sarah or Captain. They put back the, the actual state.
Okay. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
I reached out to Tracy Hughes of Community, that's the SRT and asked if we could post because there's been, you know, interest from the public. When are these public skates? Because it came this month to month it seems. So, um, you know, Captain made sure to reach out. We reached out and she gave us permission as long as we. You know, communicate that it is in fact owned by the CSRD and that the program is through the CSRD because there's a lot of confusion with that in the community. Um, but yeah, we did put out some communication.
Maybe at some point, maybe at some point we could look at even an outdoor ice rink. It would.
I'd love that.
It would be wonderful.
Yeah, I think, I almost think that by the recreation center there, there's.
A spot for it with them. But I mean, and that's a, that's a, I hope for. Um, Jamie, thank you so much. I mean. These guides are awesome and thank you for all that you do. I know that you were putting together a user's guide for events.
Yes.
Is that finished or?
I am just waiting to confirm some pricing. As soon as I get that, um, I will be bringing that forward. So yes.
Sure. I think that that's a brilliant idea too. If you're coming into Sycamore and you wanna do an event, then Jamie is gonna create a, a guide. And just like this one, and she's gonna hand it to you. Read that, fill it out. You have the permits that you need and then, you know, come see me and we'll see what we can do. So, um, that's great. Fireworks in Ju-, I, I like fireworks in July as opposed to August because, ah, July lawn, right? Um, here's a heads up maybe for you for July. If we do have high water. Why don't you reach out to Old Town Bay, to, um, Twin Acres? The barge can be out there. You can have the fireworks out there. There's a ton of parking out there. So, I mean, just so that you don't have. Um, you don't have to postpone it because July first is really July first. I mean, it's like, it's like Christmas. It's like Christmas on the thirteenth of December. Yeah, but yeah, yeah. So, but anyway, that's, and, um. the, uh, the houseboat trip. Oh, back to that though. If, if you do have high water, are you putting that circus fun day at Finlayson Park?
Yes, instead of the beach parks.
Okay.
I think that will always be the backup spot. So that would be still always have some sort of.
Okay, perfect. And that houseboat trip that Pam, you, you had put together and you commented about when those kids came off that houseboat and ran up to my office, it was like crazy amazing. They were just like all so pumped and happy and lined up at the store buying gum and best thing ever, hey?
You guys have two cent double double?
We had two, no, we had one cent. Oh, no, it's not two cent anymore. That on the download. Um, anyway, yes, and I do look forward to the, uh, Family Day August long weekend where we get out and we meet and greet and spend time. And I love that weekend too. So thank you for everything that you do. Does anyone else have anything else for Jamie? You're free to go. Thanks, Jamie.
What's going on next? All right. So we have draft resolutions for Silga. So, um, Sarah, will you be taking that away or Kelly?
Uh, so staff.
Yours.
Uh, so back in January, uh, we put this to council and a few what resolutions you would like drafted to present at Silga. So that Southern Interior Local Government Association Convention, um, resolution, the policy tool, uh, to, you know, enact change. So if endorsed by Silga, they go forward to UBCM, one of these municipalities, and then they will lobby the government on behalf of local government. So you have three there, um, based on what you had shared at the previous meeting and we're just looking for your feedback, um, before we send them away.
Does anyone have any feedback on these right now?
Cause once after this one, at the next meeting, they'll be brought for, uh, adoption or a resolution. So if there's any tweaks on any of them, now's the time so we can properly get them off in the proper, yeah.
Um, Gord, did you want to go ahead? I have just on this one, a couple.
Okay, no, you go ahead on this one.
Okay, so, um, on this one here, because I'm, I'm, it's got dirt to my heart because, I mean, all of the provincial regulation that we're going through to develop on our shoreline and save our fish will be moot if we get fog and zebra mussels. So let's put, let's be the government, put as much money into this program as it possibly can to protect our waters.
And I think we have a resolution right now at, after UBCM, does it go to FCM?
It doesn't transfer, like it doesn't automatically get sent to FCM, but we did send a revised resolution to FCM that had a, a national focus. And so, um, that has been forwarded. I haven't received word and I'll follow with them on that. Um, but with this one specifically, I did speak with Erin from the Shushua Watershed Council who, um, you know, we worked together on this because there was a letter that was sent to the minister as we know. Um, but I will follow up on the FCM.
Okay, that's great because the FCM resolution asks for, um, um, I think of a fine or a, a larger fine, not just we're going through a, um, uh, a check, but also for transporting zebra and quagga mussels. So it, I think that one asks to clean and drain and dry when moving your boat from any body of water to another. So it's kind of, um, um, you can't move your boat without clean, drain and dry, which brings me to that point right there where they say pull the plug.
Pull the plug is not the same as clean, drain and dry. Clean, drain and dry is like getting in there, washing it out, drying it out. So nothing can live in there. Pulling a plug is draining it and doesn't clean out if there is any, um.
Good point. So you can, and some folks call it pull the plug, but we need to add pull the plug, clean, drain and dry, I think. Into that one as well. And, um, funding for an excavator. Yeah. So in both of those.
Oh, thank you.
Um, yeah. So there's two plug, pull the plugs in there could be clean, drain, dry. And and I think that Gord, did you, does anyone else have anything on this one? Yeah.
Gord, you were going to.
I'm not on this one. You hit all the points.
Oh, okay. Um, to the chair, I just, I was approached by, um, a community person who is quite anxious about finding, finding shells because she didn't know what the quagga, she didn't know what they look like. Uh, finding shells where the, the waters, water's gone way out on the, um, down at the beach park. Um, so I mean, I, I wonder the benefit of a sort of, I know we need to check them before they get here. We want these checkpoints. That's really important. We don't want the boats to arrive with quagga, uh, shells or mussels on them. But would there be, I don't see any talk of like a sort of a, uh, provincial, um, public information program so that everybody understands and knows what the quagga looks like and, and is just more acutely aware of how, what this would do to our lakes. Like, has there been such a? I think they do. There, there are a lot you, but you do need to educate. We need to continue to.
Yeah.
Still, our community depends on recreation. We depend on our boaters coming here and we depend on our water for us to be successful. Yeah. So would there be money for that in, in? There, there is and they do.
Okay.
They do talk about it. It is in magazines. There are billboards, but still not enough. So we as business owners and council and residents, we need to share with our friends and family and our businesses on our websites. You know, we have on our, uh, district website, we have at the bottom of our main page, don't move a muscle. You click on that and it shows you what quagga and.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
The muscles that they're, or sorry, the shells that they're finding on the beach here.
Not.
Are not. Uh, we are still quagga and zebra muscle free as of the end of twenty twenty two, going into twenty twenty three. We don't have.
Yeah.
But see, once you get into our website and you click on don't move a muscle.
Yeah.
That's what's on the bottom. And if every business in town, every marina, uh, every Facebook page had that on there.
That on there.
Educate, educate. So, and then this is the only way we're going to do it is by making a lot of noise and making the fines steeper for transportation of, of those muscles and on float planes too. You know, float planes are coming from Winnipeg to the Shuswun. Winnipeg has, uh, quagga and zebra mussels. So they're right up to Saskatchewan. Saskatchewan is still quagga zebra muscle free. Alberta is, and we are. But it's coming this way. So how do you control float planes flying in and landing in your lake though?
Education, education.
Uh, under the mayor and council webpage, um, Kelly, there's the resolutions webpage and, um, there was a provincial response to the resolution submitted in twenty twenty one, which we talked about float planes. I'm trying to remember what exactly the response was, um, in twenty twenty one. Um, they should be our provincial response. Um, is that included on there, Kelly? Can't see.
Well, we can.
But I might have sent it out or whatever. Just, yeah.
Yeah, there is a response on those.
Well, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on to the next one. Go ahead, Gord.
Oh, good. Um, through the chair. Yeah, no, I think you guys have did a pretty good job putting this together. I really want to focus on too, the, the cost and like Daryl saying, like just the cost. The provinces, it's just so, so tough to do a business in DC anymore. The cost to put the culvert in a cur, cur road, you know, the monitoring and just, they're just downloading everything on the communities and, you know, and like Daryl says, you wonder why some of those communities in the states have won't vote. It's because of the, the cost of doing business in your own community. You just, it's unbelievable. The, the government legislation on, on working around the water. So I'd like to see something in there about the cost. The cost of doing business is, it's gone crazy. I don't, I don't know what, what, how we could word it, but big to put, put, uh, something in there about the cost. And, and I know you, you know, we talk about their timelines, you know, eight months to get a, a permit, you know, or sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. That's all I had to say about this one. I.
Yeah, kind of along, kind of along the lines of cord too. I think we should be a little more prescriptive on the last therefore be resolved. And I would think something maybe along this ways. I'll let, let you guys play with the wording is that the promise established strike, strike out appropriate level because they'll say eight months is appropriate. Uh, something like six to eight weeks for ninety percent of the applications. Cause it, it's setting kind of service standards that you can actually, there's always going to be a case where there's certain applications that are very complicated and it will take longer. But for the vast majority of things that go through, it, it should be done relatively straightforward. And we, I think we've come across some pretty straightforward things here and that's still taking eight months. So I think they just need to set up an appropriate service standard. So something like that in there would be, I think, good.
I agree with you. Um, and the other thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott or Gord, because you've probably done one. Water. Um, in the QEP report goes into the province, is the QEP report saying, yes, we approve this or no, we don't approve this or yes, it, it meets your standards or no, it doesn't meet standards. This is a QE report, go to the provincial government saying, yes, this meets the standards that we're, that, that are required.
So of where you can build and where you can't build, right?
Sure. So why can't that QEP report come to us? Like, we're not going to say, uh, yeah, go build out in the water there. I mean, if the QEP says, here's, here's your, your guidelines, district to Secamose, follow them and I'll be back to check them. Why does this have to go to the provincial government and hold us up?
So it used to do that. Record comes to us, we'd see it was submitted and we can move forward. Fortunately, when they did an audit of them, they realized that, that the QEPs were not meeting the standards. So then they changed it to say the province has to approve them all.
Yeah. And, and further to that, just on that same thing. So, and they were only going to be reviewing it for a two-year period until the QEPs kind of pulled up their socks in terms of their accuracy to be in line with the province, but they're finding, they're still finding issues. So, and that was back, I think in, I don't know, twenty sixteen. So now there's, there's, or it could be twenty fourteen. So they're still requiring the review until such time as they feel like the QEPs are operating at a level that it's about the profession. Yeah. So if the QEP takes, and sorry, I'm just like getting this straight. If the QEP takes a report to the government that doesn't meet the required provincial regulations, shouldn't that QEP be going, you're not a QEP anymore? Don't, you're not certifying our stuff anymore. Let's get a QEP here that's going to work for the government and work with the, with the district. Like, because you got stupid QEPs, so everybody gets punished? Like, I don't understand.
You know what I mean? I just think that they could pick better QEPs or don't be a QEP if that's not what you want to do for a living, but certainly make it simpler for districts and developers and other people to work together and not be held up by. So just my thoughts. Go ahead, Gord.
I agree. I agree. It's just, uh, it's so cumbersome to get a, get an application through the process. I mean, even it doesn't matter if you look at, um, the mountain bike park trail. If he, we pretty much gave up on that and, uh, letting Shushua rail lines came along and took it on. But it's just, it's, it's so cumbersome to get any kind of application through, uh, provincial crown, ground people. That it's, uh, it's, uh, I don't know. I don't know how developers do it. It's, it's, it's not even worth it anymore.
Maybe just one other thing since we're talking about this, like, it's gotten to the point, I agree with all your comments, is you start looking for ways around the rules. This is how bad it gets, right? You look at the rules and you go, oh dear God. And then people start looking for what the loopholes are. That's not what regulations are intended for, but we've gotten it so brutal, the timelines are so brutal, that people are just going to start ignoring the rules. And so I don't know where, if we put that in there, like, it's, it's just counterproductive what they're doing now. Like you, you, any type of government tries to get compliance with the rules because you can't actually force people while you checking on every single thing for them to do the right thing. You're relying on them to say, yeah, that's a pretty good rule. Let's go ahead and do it. And what we're doing now is literally, I think, uh, making it so hard to comply with the rules, people just give up. And it, you know, much to your, your comment about the, the bike park or the culver. It becomes too expensive and it's too cumbersome. So why even bother? And so you just do it, right? And I think that's the, the worry here is that homeowners are just going to give up.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Um, based on what you guys are, are saying, are you wanting us to potentially modify this to, instead of saying, you know, uh, increase your service delivery level to say, you know what, let's remove this requirement.
Yep.
You know, like, it's not really about the timeline. It's like, let's no longer require, like, we can do that extreme or we could say, uh, put in a, be more efficient essentially, or no longer require this, right? Would you like that kind of embedded in that end bit somehow?
I, I agree. Like, let's put that in, like.
But also maybe say approved QEPs, provincially approved QEPs, like, as opposed to the QEP, you know? Doing his report and then sending it to the province. Province, give us a guy that will follow your guidelines. We'll follow your guidelines and can work with us. And then we don't need to send it back to you. Find people you can trust and do their job properly.
Okay, Gord. Yeah, no, you're, you're right. I mean, I think, I think it is, it is, we could ask anyways and.
Yeah, to no longer require.
Hey.
Yeah.
Everybody, great, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I agree that like just, I think the point that could be made is, you know, we're responsible actors as well, government. We can interpret these things and we have control over our zoning and planning. That, that would fall back to us like it used to be. Yeah.
Yeah, and add to OCP.
Make us just.
Yeah.
Government, the provincial government doesn't have a problem with the download healthcare costs on us and downloading other costs and downloading building codes and downloading, downloading. But yet we want to make a decision and we get asked mom and dad. So it's, I, yeah, I just think that we should see if we can get in charge of.
Okay, we'll tweak it. All right, bring it back.
Okay, next one. Any, any other comments on this?
I'm just confused because I thought that, that the QEP went, came, started with us, with, with the communities and they took it away because we weren't doing it to the standard that they needed us to do. So they're not likely to, if we say give it back to us, to give it back to us, right?
It wasn't that we weren't doing our job.
Not necessarily us.
We P.
Oh, the QEP. So who would be the QEP?
Well, it's whoever they hire, yeah, by the environment.
So it's still someone that's hired by them. It's not, that's already Kenny or it's not one of us. It's not somebody in our community.
No.
Okay, that was my other, I, I wasn't sure. So that's their, oh.
Yeah.
Really? I'm sorry. Okay.
It's just, yeah, it's like if, if they're not going to do the job for you, then fire them.
Yes. Oh, okay. I thought we were responsible for providing a.
License, spend their license until.
Absolutely. Why should we pay? Okay, I get it. I get it. I didn't know who the QEP was.
First through my research, my understanding was that the, the point of the review was to, to create education and to bring that level up for the QEPs in the province. So I just wanted to share that input. The reason they were reviewing all of them was to provide guidance to qualified environmental professionals so that they could all be at the same level. That was the intent.
But that.
Okay, but that intent took it away from us. Yeah. Okay. Anything else on this one?
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
All right, this one is.
Highway one, four leaning from Cam's to the.
Kelly, did you want to say something?
Nope. I, I just have a question. Um, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's more than eight hundred and thirty-seven million over the next three years. We're talking about the entire runner. We're talking about the entire runner kilometer section? Or, or is that it?
This is specific story from Camlips to the Alberta border. And so that number was pulled from their, uh, their website.
So if, for the next three years, they're gonna put in only eight hundred and thirty-seven million. From Camlips to Alberta. Wow. So that includes everything they're doing on kicking horse. On, on our bridge, on everything over the next three years, only eight hundred and thirty-seven million? That doesn't seem like a lot of money to do that, to do that works.
It was a lot of money.
Hours, two thirty-seven for the bridge? Go ahead, Councilor Bushell.
Yeah, we should double check that number, cause it does seem low, but um, I, I wondered if, you know, we, we. Very many municipalities between Camlips and, and the Alberta border. And I wondered if we could reach out. To those municipalities and talk to their councils and say, would you help support or, or put your name on this resolution? And, cause it benefits them all. And uh, it's not just us. I know it's gonna go through Silga and it's gotta go through. U B C N, but if we, if we have some better names on this as well, their municipality and their mayor's signature or whoever, you know? It would, it would might have some clout. I don't know, maybe Greg would be able to, or M L A would be able to help it.
Um, councillor McKay.
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, years ago, they had that what they call the mayor's, mayor's highway form or whatever. It's all the mayors along the corridor. And they got together. Yes, Secamoose is a, the last town that hasn't been four-lane through the municipality, now through the arterial section. Except for us rental, but they're thinking maybe a bypass there, but. Uh, maybe try to resurrect the mayor's, mayor's corridor along the Trans-Canada Highway, cause. That has a little more, more clout. So you get that golden rebel stoke, rebel stoke coming through it, so does Golden, really. We're, we're just the last community that really doesn't. I don't know.
Thanks Malcolm. Yeah, we are kind of the last community that doesn't have four lanings through it, so. And maybe this should be a bigger push for four lanes, just to send the brood bridge. Like, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe we can say, sorry, through the chair. Maybe we can say that, therefore be a result. Yeah, like, retweet that to focus on just us, Secamoose, our arterial. We're the last arterial from, from Horseshoe Bay to uh, the Alberta border. That doesn't have a four lane for me, for our, through our arterial, through our municipality. And we want to make that a priority.
I agree. Voted. Let's bypass all the other communities. They all bypassed us.
Okay, anyone else have any comments on this one?
Their changes.
And I just wanted to thank everybody. It's really important because it's the councillors that advocate here. So it's really important that your input, we're trying to capture. What you want to advocate for. So your input on these is really important. So thanks.
Thanks, guys. You guys should do.
Just, when does this go to Silga?
April twenty-ninth or something?
The deadline to this resolution is February twenty-fourth. So you, people come forward on the twenty-second at the regular. Who adopts or pass and then we will submit them to Silga by the twenty-fourth.
Okay, we're good. Okay, let's carry on. Province-wide housing summit attended. Who is, oh.
Is that gonna be?
Yeah, so this was just brought forward today because there was some discussion on who, who should be attending this. And just, just to high level, um, talk about the cost of it as well. So we have a ten thousand dollar buffer for. One-off travel and allowance, which this would come out of. Uh, and if we send somebody, Sarah has done some preliminary. Projected costs, so that way council's aware of how much is coming out of that budget. So if there's any one-off conferences or. Or programs that need, that somebody wants to uh, go through, we normally will talk about it at council, get everybody's blessing. Or at a committee meeting, get everybody's blessing, uh, and then move forward with the registration. So I'm.
Just, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. You just said we have a ten thousand dollar. Yeah, budget for this. So that's ten thousand dollars for our whole year. For seven of us. So. Let's pick our battles carefully. So, you know, some stuff we can zoom into, but other things, like this one, I think it's really important. And I think, um, I had mentioned. Maybe, um, Kelly and Siobhan. However, Malcolm made a good point. It is taxpayers' money. So maybe two councillors, but this is a big project that we're working on with, um, Eagle Valley and. Our own housing society. So I guess that's why we're, we're sitting here having this nonsense right now. So, sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, that's exactly right. And just to high level, right now, we still don't have an idea of how much the actual course is gonna be. But we do know where it is. So we're estimating by the time you do the. Mileage, the accommodation for two nights and your per dams, it's about seventeen hundred. Per, yeah. I mean, if, if we carpool, uh, then we'll save on the kilometers, right? If, if two members are going and they take the same vehicle, that's not always the case. Um, or decide to fly, however that's gonna work out. Um, but yeah, so seventeen hundred approximately per person plus the cost to register for the summit. So that's what we're looking at.
Councillor Evans.
I was just gonna say, thank you. Uh, I think we should definitely send. Somebody who, and Siobhan is a no-brainer, cause she's involved in housing here. Um, I, I'd like to see, this is important. And they can come back with good reports, their ideas for us.
Councillor Bushell.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Bob. Uh, you know, I, I really do. I think it's really important. You guys could sleep in your, asleep in the car.
Uh, Malcolm, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. Um, we haven't seen the agenda yet and how many workshops are, but I think this is gonna be an overwhelming attendance. This is probably gonna be as big as U B C N because it is the topic these days across Canada. So. I think we need to send two people because we're gonna have to pick and choose which workshops we go to, what, you know, speakers we listen to. And one person just can't cover this. So I think we gotta wait until. We see what's being offered here. And then, and then, and then decide, maybe by email later, if there's a deadline here, whatever. How many people need to go? I, I think two people should go because I'm thinking. This is gonna get an overwhelming registration and uh. Uh, this might be as big as U B C N itself, this. So uh. Uh, we don't have enough information to make a decision if one or two people goes, but what I'm saying basically, to, to make it effective.
Thanks Malcolm. Um, I, I think two people should go as well. Like, I'm not, I'm not disputing that fact at all. And does Eagle Valley Housing Society have any? Any funding for anything like this? Like.
I've, I forwarded this information to Kelly, so she's aware of it. I haven't heard back from her yet, though.
They had some budget and then Malcolm and Siobhan went. That would, that would cover it and cover both projects. So. It would be good to find that out. Councillor Bailey?
I, yeah, we were talking about Kelly attending and I, I think there's some value to having. Uh, our senior staff member there. Um, so I, I think I'm.
Kelly, Kelly?
Kelly, Kelly, yeah.
Oh, I think they were talking about the other Kelly, Kelly Hassleton from.
Oh, I thought we were talking about attending.
Okay, which is fine too.
This is Kelly, Kelly, and that's Kelly.
Oh, sorry. I, I don't know you were Kelly. Yeah, okay, okay. Well, no, then, then actually my, my, my point still kind of stands is, is there some value in making sure we have. People from a staff level there too. Or is it traditional? I mean, U B C N is, is usually a, I don't know, it's a collection of everybody kind of thing.
You know, one, and you know, if Malcolm and Siobhan were to, I, I'd feel comfortable with.
Sure.
Not looking to send staff.
Yeah, so not Kelly, Kelly.
Don't tell Kelly.
Okay. No, 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 I'm on.
To the chair, um. I, I, I think that there'll be like four breakout sessions per. Per every topic. And I know that even with two, it will be hard to cover everything. Um, I was thinking that if we did. I've termed her Kelly H. Uh, if we did include Kelly H. Um, that there's a good chance that she would pull a fourth from, from her crew. To go. I don't know for sure, but I just thought we might get four.
Sure, that all depends. They're gonna want to, they're not gonna spend the money on their own.
No, I know.
I think we need to find out if Kelly H can get some cash to. Take the trip and then we'll send to councillors.
Okay, sounds good. And we can, we'll, we'll follow up and uh. Bianca, just saying, you know, we can always tweak the budget and modify it a little bit, cause yes, this is really important and there are gonna be a lot of, you know. Together there, so.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, we just walked in, um. We want to see you off, Murray. You're welcome. Let's, let's bump you up.
So, let me, let me just give that overview of what's going on.
And share some of your thoughts and some of the information that you've gathered and how you're feeling about any direction. That we should look at here. We value your opinion, your team, so share away.
All right. So, uh, decriminalization began the province, which is the only, uh, province Canada that has requested. Uh, for these, uh, list of controlled drugs. Uh, to be, uh, decriminalized, uh, for a period of three years. Beginning, uh, January thirty-third of twenty twenty-three. So what that means is two point five grams of, uh, previously. Uh, where they were criminalized, if you were possessed of cocaine, methamphetamine. Uh, M D M A, uh, these drugs, that you could technically be charged, uh, with the old drugs and substances that were possession. The purpose of the change is the, the government has decided that, that by decriminalizing, that it will reduce stigma. Associated with use of drugs and hopefully, uh, people are choosing to use it. Uh, will not be doing it in the shadows and will be doing it alone as they, they're quoting that. Statistics show that, uh, people who overdose die from the. From, uh, using these drugs are doing so alone in their homes. So that's the end the, uh, government has taken in the province. They petitioned to the federal government for permission to have a decriminalization granted. And here we are now. So with it being decriminalized, we're in a, in a position where. We don't have legislation that regulates, uh, the use of it in public. Uh, we just have to go by, by, uh, it being criminalized. So now that is no longer anything worth a place to pay for an action. But there was one municipality, uh, that kind of got ahead of this, Campbell River. Uh, passed a bylaw, it was on their public notices bylaw, they amended it and introduced. A charge, it was a two hundred dollar fine and it was for, uh, not the possession of the, these, uh, controlled drug substances. But, uh, the consumer element in public, in a public space. So they passed that bylaw, which would give the police in Campbell River the power to go into a public area, such as a park, a beach. Uh, playground and issue a fine. Uh, tell the people who are doing so or using that, that move along and, uh, get them out of there and, you know, which will problem out of that area. Without that, so how police would, what we face with right now, uh, police in Secamoose or any other community or ex-Canadian. If we have a report of someone using, uh, these substances, say, shooting heroin. On a, on a bench at Secamoose Beach Park or on a, on a bench on Main Street. Uh, we can't make it unfortunate. Uh, we would go up and talk to that person and we're supposed to give them, uh, a card. Which, uh, is an information card given to us by the province, which, uh, set that person up with, uh. All these, uh, one eight hundred numbers, the contact to reach services, uh. Related to, uh, someone who uses drugs like, uh. Detox services or, uh, mental health or, uh, public health, that type of thing. So we would not be in a position where we can seize any of these drugs. We're not in a position where we would be, uh. That person move on or, uh, certainly not arrest them because it's been decriminalized. So you can, you can see that there would be problems. There would be, uh, I, I would imagine all the public is aware of this. And, uh, there would be, uh, lots of instances where the public wouldn't want to see this. And, uh, would have issue with, uh, someone using, using drugs, say, in, uh, you know, a very public place like. The park outside of, uh, the civic center. We have, uh, that's not a school zone. So. Under this legislation, the only places where you cannot, uh, use these drugs, possess, use these drugs. Is on school property. Uh, school property and airport, uh, coast guard facility. And that's, that's about it. It's not, uh. Doesn't say anything about other parks, doesn't say anything about playgrounds. It's gotta be an actual school property. So it, it leaves, it leaves a lot of, uh, a lot of other areas where some municipalities would probably. Want to take some, uh, further action on that and make plan for when it's done. So. So, uh, we've all been educated, they've kind of educated, uh, the police here, they're like, this course, here's what you're, what we're doing. They're giving us these, uh, pounds that we're supposed to be handing out. And, uh, that, that's where we're at. Kind of puts it in a. And, uh. It's kind of a confounding thing because the cannabis act, like cannabis was, uh, criminalized, uh, quite a, quite a while ago, a few years ago. And provincial legislation on that, it impedits, uh, cannabis from, uh, being consumed in public parks. So a person cannot go down to, uh, the Secamoose Beach Park and smoke cannabis joint legally. Uh, at two o'clock in the afternoon with a bunch of children around. But if you stood up in the hour and say, there's a ticket for that, it's a hundred dollar fine, move on. But the same person would sit there and, uh, smoke meth and nothing over a glass pipe. It's something that the municipalities have to, uh, to think about, talk about, discuss and, um. And make their, make their decision on it. I've already seen, uh, some negative press, I keep an eye on it, kind of monitor. There was some negative press already, but what Camp River has done. Uh, some media outlets were criticizing them for going against what the other laws, the government are trying to do. Uh, the provincial government, federal government saying. It's decriminalized, we don't want to, uh, put enforcement against these people. We want them to, uh. Be able to use, use their substances or whatnot without, uh, without a fear of, uh, enforcement. So there was some pushback already that I read in the, uh, vote, but Camp River has done, but. Uh, ultimately it comes down to where the police enforce the laws, we don't pass the laws, so. You know, that's, that's where it's at, so. Just wanted to make sure that, uh. Mayor and councillor are aware of the situation. And I don't know how much that's actually going to come into play, like. We, you know, cannabis, cannabis has been, uh, decriminalized, legalized for quite some time now. And we're not inundated with a number of complaints about it. I mean, you voted different events, you. You could smell it being smoked and whatnot, but we're not, uh. We're not inundated with complaints, but it's also a different. It's something completely different than the, the harm drugs that we're talking about now and this stigma and whatnot that goes along with that, so. Yeah, I don't know if, uh, people that choose to use these drugs, if they would be doing that in public openly at two o'clock in the afternoon or continue to. Try to keep it less, uh, less visible. And then even if there isn't a bylaw. The police can still have a conversation with that person, but. Area where they're choosing to use this, I mean, we can still have that conversation. But if the person is not receptive to what we're saying, then we're ultimately allowed a couple, a couple hours to do it. So.
Wow. I remember four years ago in, at election time, when we were talking about, uh, legalization of cannabis. We're like, oh my God, what's gonna happen, you know? And that's nowhere near the issues it could be faced, that we could be faced with this, you know what I mean? The beach park.
Yeah.
I mean. Um, go ahead, councillor.
Oh, I'm just, I'm trying to see you with the light.
Um, yeah, I think I brought this up before it actually went to force. Uh, we had a letter kind of informing of, of this. You know, this, this is going to be a potential huge impact. It's a, it's a massive. Um, kind of like, study, really, is, is what's happening here. It's not, not happening again in Canada. So B C has kind of embarked on this in the hopes that. It does have some sort of benefit in taking away the stigma and getting people help. It's all well and good, uh, but there's no real evidence to say that's what it's gonna do, right? So my, my perspective on it is, I think it's a little irresponsible to go full hog on this. Without having some sort of guardrails around it. And like, I, I worked in cannabis before I came to Secamoose. And I can tell you about the rules and regulations. Incredibly tough. Like, you can't even have advertising on. Incredibly tough, like you can't even have advertising on a label of cannabis, like what the federal government did in the regime that they put in place to around, to, to allow legal cannabis was incredibly strict, and you're not even allowed to this day um have a cannabis plant uh visible. When you can grow in your backyard, you're allowed certain, like five plants, I think, is still, legally, you're not allowed to have that visible. Because they were so concerned about children seeing drugs grow and people harvesting it. So we have all those sets of rules and now we go here where uh you potentially can see people shooting up in the park and, and that is allowed because it's decriminalized. And so, I mean, I, I take your point, and I didn't know about the Campbell River, uh uh that was even an option. And I would certainly like to explore that because the last thing I wanna see is somebody who's obviously challenged and they're on drugs and they're addicted, that doesn't mean they have a right to share that with younger and more vulnerable people as well that we have in the community, we have to balance the needs of that community with the balance, balance for everybody else as well.
So if testing the drinks, the, because a lot of people are not observing, you can't go in that brother's beer and wine store buying a pack of beer, walk into the beach.
That's right.
But you can shoot.
That's illegal.
Also, also illegal, yeah.
The constable will walk up to you, seize the beer and pour it out and uh if he wants to issue you a ticket, so.
Well, maybe.
Uh that's not the same for, for the Harvard.
Well, maybe just one other point, just to, yeah, is that you can't walk out of a restaurant with an open beer out in the parking lot. That's illegal.
Go ahead, Shona. Through the chair, thank you. Um, so I would be in favor of some kind of bylaw, especially around our rec centers and schools. I don't know if we can do something that someone has to be that far away. Uh my other concern would be for our park staff, are we go, you know, we need to look at maybe setting up um, you know, when you're the yellow disposable needle and pipe things, because is that going to bring those tech things into our park? And are you guys gonna be picking them up and where, how do we dispose of that? Cause that's not a regular black garbage can that we're gonna want people to drop um their paraphernalia in. Um and then, you know, do local staff then need to be trained um on the, the, the loxen, how do you say it, Pam?
Oh, the loxen, yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I've done the course, I actually was in Askew's uh last year two people in the car next to me, I was like, why are they sleeping at four o'clock on a Friday? And then, you know, I realized what was going on um and called the RCMP and they helped them out. Um but yeah, I think those are other things we really have to consider that, that in our community, that that paraphernalia could be around and in our streets and left, and how are we gonna look after our own staff with that?
Counselor Marshall.
Yeah, through the chair, good point, good point. Yeah, I don't know how the province should even try to implement or like allow that to happen uh and make you guys look after the mess they've created. I mean, and we just finished talking about resolutions from U B C M, this is a perfect one and I'm sure every uh, every community in B C would jump on board and says, you know, you can't allow it in parks. It has to be like alcohol, it has to be like tobacco or marijuana, you know, it's just, it's unbelievable that they're gonna make you guys try to look after this for.
You know, cannabis was uh legalized, they passed the provincial B C cannabis act, which stated that it cannot be consumed in any public park.
Yeah.
So that, that took the weight off of local municipalities from uh doing the, the bylaw work that it was already done by provincial, provincial level, so. Wasn't done this time.
But I just finished up, I do agree, we should, you know, in the meantime, maybe look at our bylaws, but.
Um I think um Campbell River is a nuisance, public nuisance amendment, right?
Yeah, so it's a fine.
It's a fine.
Right, so then our bylaw officer would.
So it would be monitored by bylaw, so you know it's.
Bylaw anyways, so a police officer, an officer can go off of the Campbell River without those tickets in his uh, his duty bag as well and he could issue the same ticket.
Go ahead, counsel. Through the chair, um so if we had a bylaw, we could prohibit it even coming into parks, right? We could put up signage.
Hmm.
Okay, and then it would be the bylaw officer and the police that would respond to uh somebody who came in. I, I can't fathom having someone shoot up in front of children in the park.
I can't.
Or having a, having an O D in front of families in the park, like this unbelievable.
But if you were in the Campbell River bylaws, soon wasn't uh.
Consuming.
Because was that if it been decriminalized, so they talked about consuming it in the park.
Yeah, consuming.
Assumption, yeah. And uh in any city facilities, highway, park or public place.
Just a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and that's very consistent with the rules around alcohol. Like, uh we're, we're talking about drugs on magnitude of order, far more lethal than a beer. And, and if we have, like you said, you can't walk down the sidewalk with a beer, that's technically illegal. So, you know, I, I don't know why anybody would criticize Campbell River for putting some guardrails around this. We have all those rules already in place for cannabis, alcohol, and if we're not gonna do it for hard drugs, this just seems like, it, it just seems so athenic, can't imagine, so I, I think we need to start looking at a bylaw.
Sorry, through the chair, along with what you just said, we have strict rules about dogs in parks.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, I agree with you, and it just.
It is, it's, it's really concerning, it's concerning for you, like, and you know what, I'm a little bit ignorant, I don't know how much two hundred grams.
Two point five.
Five grams, like, how much is that?
Look a little bit bigger than a quarter, so you have a little baggie and uh it'd be a small amount of powder, maybe the size of a two quarters side by side, we kind of cover that surface area.
So enough for someone, and again, I'm really ignorant.
Brainy, right?
Um so is that enough for one person to get high on or can it be shared? Or can they sell it to the guy next to them if they need to, although you're not allowed to, but yeah.
Trafficking is still illegal in, in all sense. Uh two point five grams is what they come up with a vertical amount. And yeah, I mean, by nature of that is that most addicts would not be consuming two point five grams at one, one time. It might be uh, you know, a couple of uses, but it wouldn't be all at once. Maybe that'd be a lot to consume all at once, but it's still what is, what is considered a personal amount, so. The other thing that I should mention and it's, we have at least uh not just the Sickmoose R C P, but the police general. We have not been uh, uh charging people for possession of that amount for quite some time. So in the province, if a police officer seized uh a small amount of cocaine or methamphetamine from a person and they wanted to charge that person, be uh, be right. And it's a federal charge, it goes to the federal crown, and the federal crown decides yes or no for charge approval. And there's been no appetite uh for charges of simple possession for quite some time. So it's not, it's not like uh there's gonna be a huge change in uh how business is done in courts, there's gonna be a bunch of court papers freed up. Those, those possession cases, uh they haven't been, you know, approved since like the early two thousands, early my career that uh you could find somebody and said two grams of cocaine, the, the crown would say, let's charge this person. It's what we call a no case seizure, the police seize the drugs and send the person on their way and they're destroyed. That's what we've been doing business for quite some time.
Counselor Page. Um, to the chair, um so one would assume then if now that it's decriminalized, that there will be stores popping up selling this stuff?
No, 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 so uh the, the federal or the federal government, they don't wanna get into business of doing that. For just uh, decriminalize things, or at least you're not supposed to be
Okay.
Uh staring over the shoulder of people who are.
So to follow up on that, that means that there still is the risk that of where they get their drugs from.
Yes.
That it's tainted.
Yeah.
And there's still a huge risk for an overdose based on a fentanyl, you know.
Yeah, there's no safe supply.
There's no safe supply, so the risk for that happening is, is big, uh if there's no safe supply. Okay.
So the point of this is to get people out of their house, houses and in public just in case they need assistance.
The province has said that uh there's too many people cornered in the province, say there's too many people overdosing alone uh particularly in their, in their dwelling house, I guess, and that the, this is what they come up with to combat that.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, real quick, um yeah, so they can do it at a party and somebody can give them the loxen or get them help, but um how soon? I mean, this is a question for everybody through the chair, but how, how soon can we enact a bylaw to get it ready, get this approved so we can give our, our police the ability to protect a skateboard park?
Absolutely, and so I'm gonna head that direction, I'm sending that to your, to you. How soon could we change our?
Probably to council meetings if you don't do any public consultations, so.
We don't need public consultation?
That's all.
Okay, to council.
Better done.
Now, do we want, and maybe Murray, this is where you can shed some light too, is this, has everyone seen the Campbell River?
No, I haven't seen that.
Would you, would you change any, you've sent, you've, you've seen it, you've sent it to me, would you change anything in this which you, is giving you?
It's just that the cat is doing it, uh we want to just read it on the pocket.
It says it's bylaws for the protection enhancement of well-being of the community by prohibiting the consumption of controlled substances at any city facility, highway, park or public place.
There you go, controlled substances would be all of mentioned, uh cocaine, uh meth, MDMA, heroin. All those substances that are still under the controlled drugs and substance that, so anyone consuming any of those hard drugs, there would be a violation of that, that town bylaw.
So I guess you can't, we can't change it to prohibit controlled substances at, at any. Uh I guess, yeah, no, because they're, they're legal, right?
I think you should talk to your, your lawyer about being contradicted in uh the decriminalization that the province has asked for.
Hey, go ahead.
Sir, uh so just wanted to state too that that was an amendment to their public nuisance bylaw. As far as I know, the District of Sickmoose does not have a public nuisance bylaw. Um so staff can look at that um and include um you know, restricting the public consumption within that bylaw, if that's the direction from council.
And this is a two hundred dollar fine.
There's a fine attached, so then there'd be amendment to the ticketing, uh sorry, the fees bylaw as well.
Go ahead. Yeah, and further to that, there is a, uh U B C M is putting on um a little session on February fifteenth that we will be attending and get some more information as well, so, cause every local government is going through this, so. But knowing your direction is good, so we'll start preparing things behind us.
Through the. Uh through the chair, and just so I understand it, that, that the police officers could carry the bylaw tickets also? Because our bylaw officer works um restricted hours because we're a small town, so that, that could be enforced
Yes.
at all times, or when you guys are on duty, thank you.
I was just thinking, um, that I don't really, I wouldn't put it, if we're creating one, I wouldn't put it under public nuisance, but I would call it a public health bylaw or something like I, I'm not sure I like the.
Public safety?
Or public safety or something, yes. I wouldn't put it under nuisance, but I think they just use that bylaw.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, go ahead, sir.
Staff can explore that, and I was looking, because we had talked, this would have been in a staff meeting, but um regarding uh we have a parks regulation bylaw, which we prohibit smoking in, but it's very specific, so it wouldn't include you know, facilities and highways, so we have some more investigating to do, this is really new and we'll attend that webinar and provide information to council at a later date.
I think, I think it's safe to say that we all agree that we need, as Ian would say, to put some guardrails around this. So.
You definitely have to look at the wording of it, uh whether you're talking about public spaces. It's a, it's a major.
Askew's, yeah, but yeah, yeah. Does anyone have, go ahead.
Yes, through, thank you, uh is, is there any way we should be alerting U B C M and, and should this not be a, a resolution for all? You know, municipalities, I mean, they're, this is crazy, uh they're, they're not gonna make it like, you know, marijuana or. They, I could be, they, they missed the boat on that, or.
Maybe some municipalities that uh don't wanna enact that bylaw, I'm not sure. When you go to that meeting on the fifteen, you might see different opinions in the room, I'm not sure.
Um, just maybe.
Go ahead, Catherine.
You're on C S R D, this should be something brought up at the C S R D level too, I think. Cause they would have to enact, so like, we have a little, our little feedom here, but as soon as you get outside that little line that, that says Sickmoose was C S R D.
For sure, and I have reached out.
You have.
Anders.
Okay.
Um and, and don't have the feedback and didn't get any feedback, and I think it's because I think they're they're like, us right now, we're just gathering information and we know, we know that this is, could be a code red, so we wanna move on it, we're not gonna wait for other municipalities, other municipalities, I will do, be sick of this. Does anyone else have any questions for Murray?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing us.
Thank you, Murray, team, thanks for everything you do.
Lots of, uh, lots of work for you guys to, to chew on there, maybe listen.
Yeah. I think we wanna do something, thank you, thank you so much, have a good day.
Okay, let's go to.
Comment. I'm Marie.
It does.
Before I do that, and maybe as we're, as we're thinking about this bylaw, how we're going to word it or put it together or I don't know if we're want to send it to U B C M or, or A S O G A, or even as a resolution to A S O G A. Rather than, because we don't have a nuisance, may, maybe a health and safety bylaw?
Yeah, I, I, I just think, like, I think this is, we're, we're gonna have a very strong case to defend this. Because the laws around alcohol, the laws around cannabis says you cannot consume this in any public spaces. So to me, the logic of not having the same rules around this is, is it, it's un, it's you can't defend it. And, and I think, you know, what's good for alcohol, what's good for cannabis, there was a ton of thought that was done around the cannabis uh legislation, multiple years of consultations and, and things that went through the province, the municipalities. You should see the, the consultation book that was done on that, and then to have none of that on this. No heroin, we know cocaine, we know all these substances are much more lethal, like meth. Much more lethal than cannabis or alcohol. So I, I feel really comfortable that if someone said like you're going against the spirit of it. But then we're going against the spirit of alcohol, the rules we have around alcohol and cannabis. And we put a lot of thought in those two rules as a society, right?
Thank you. Counselor Rich.
Uh through the chair, thank you. I don't know if it's possible or not, um but Daryl, maybe you can answer it. Is it, when you not pick up beer cans, obviously, but if you're getting needles or um little stringy wrap things, I don't know how drugs are totally done or glass pipes, is it possible to keep track of that for the bit? Like, let your people know and say, hey, if you're picking up, can you, can you make a note or have a little chart when you sign in and hey, it is an issue or it's not an issue, um. I lived in White Rock for seventeen years and we would have to, with parents shoulder to shoulder, comb the fields before the kids could play soccer. Um so to see if it actually is an issue, or maybe it's just, um you know, everybody's kind of having a panic attack and it's not going to be, but it would be interesting to see if there is a lot of things needing to be picked up. In the, as this changes over, you know, I mean, summer will be the telltale, right? As people find out that, that they're no longer, that they can't do these kind of things and um you know, I think as word gets out, we'll see more and more of it.
Okay, go ahead.
Sir, it's not that uncommon for us to find stuff in the bathrooms around skateboard park or wherever, there's, there's like, there's a lot of things, I didn't know what they were, just little, your little bags of meth. They've got quite a few of those that our garbage people have. A little kit for picking up sharps, yeah, we do all that, in jars and stuff, so. It's over there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's um, we better move on, we got a three o'clock in camera here. Okay, let's, um, we better move on, we've got a three o'clock in camera here, so the health summary, summit summary.
I'll do, I'll I'll be really quick because you guys have all of the all of the information, the health summit. Uh, it's just, it ran for basically over a period of week and the time slots added up to about two and a half. Two and a half days, um, it was, it was awesome, and the reason I've given you the background information. And the and the summit information is so that you understand the scope of the kind of people that came to the table for. For these discussions and um. Over two hundred and fifty participants, to be there, you had to be invited and I was invited. I'm, I didn't, I'm not aware of anyone else from the shoe shop, I didn't run into or see anyone else familiar to me from the shoe shop, so. I'm not sure if I was the only one from the shoe shop, um, but all from all over um B C. From interior health uh down. Um, so it gives you, I will, you'll see in your package uh the kinds of questions that we discussed in the. In the whole and also in partner tables in the breakout sessions. Um, just to finish it off, the what I came away with and what I always come away with, I just want to stress with you when I meet at these tables. Is um. Is how how advanced we are here, I how, I'm just so proud of the fact that every time I go to these tables and sit at these tables. What people are missing, the gaps that they're seeing, um, and what they want to be is what we're doing here. And and I just, I just want to encourage council, we are actually, um. People are looking at at what we're doing as the the future model. I, we're not there yet and we've got a lot of work, so I, you know, I don't, I I just am saying we're headed in the right direction and I'm and and I was just really impressed. And the only other thing is that when I looked at the key points of consensus that I took out of my head to do this, it was really negative. And I was shocked when I read that afterwards, after sort of writing it all down. Um, it 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 was, the healthcare system is in, it is in chaos. Um, interior health teams within interior health are siloed, they don't know who's doing things. All of this started to come out over the week. Um, and and it and I looked at that and I thought, oh my God, that's so negative, but it it was. But the one thing that we all agreed on is that COVID had forced us all, including interior. Health to actually move quickly to collaborate and find solutions, which is the one thing that is not happening. At the at the community levels and um that came out so so loud and clear. That it that um we have a disconnect with the services being provided on the ground. And I and that wasn't new to me, because I'd done the true university research and that's exactly what came out of that. Research piece here is is how disconnected we all are from interior health. Um, and so it was a, it was a great conference, a great summit, and we're, we are doing. A great thing here and everybody is is waiting to see a rural model come forward that works, so.
Thanks, Pam.
Way to go, Councilor.
Yeah, no, I think we are, we.
Yeah.
Made big strides over the past few years and and are, you know, setting some trends and and a bar for other communities to.
Absolutely.
You know, to be, um, and I think, uh, to your point of silos and I I just, I really think it's a management problem. I think they really need to get their.
All the structure is, yes.
Someone to figure all that out.
And you know, when you get into that structure, it's like. You you get absorbed in it and I and I saw this, because I saw retired. Uh, Granger Avery is a retired physician who is at the top of the medical field and um. When it was pointed out to him, he has a pentagram partner group that is part of the infrastructure now, but it's at the top. And it brings all of us apparently together, but when someone made a point that we're still disconnected at ground level, he was shocked, it was kind of like. You just get lost in that infrastructure and and you don't realize.
Yeah.
How disconnected it is at the bottom. Anyways, it was great, you guys.
Pam, okay, so moving on, mayor council reports, and then we've got. Some comments from like, or do you want to? What do you got?
Uh, thanks, starting with me. Uh, January twenty seventh, I attended the rail trail meeting, uh, we went over some agreements and uh for versus the permits, so. Talked about new permits, they're working on that, uh, they're entering this spring, they've got like fourteen point two million dollars, uh, they're ready to start. Going on the rail trail, so uh to get their permits all in place and they'll start working on it, I think, and I think that's the way it's going to go. Um, coming along, met up with Pat Garrow from Search and Rescue, um, put him in touch with Darryl. We were going to try to get it on the agenda for today, but we still got a little bit of homework to do, so we're going to work on that. Um, planning and development meeting, I stopped in the staff did a good job the last February first. Um, Eagle Valley Songbook Club Dinner and Auction on February eighteenth, it's a, it's a big event for the community. Uh, usually two hundred, two hundred and fifty people there, so get your tickets and then I haven't, I haven't touched base with Deb about the cleanup that we're. We're gonna start working on the cleanup in April twenty ninth.
Councilor Rich.
Uh, not as busy as Gord. Um, uh, did the sewer and water tour with Darryl, which was great, learned a lot. Um, and then I listened to the planning meeting online afterwards and I would really encourage anyone who can't make it, I find it. Like, really learn a lot on it, so that's it for me.
Awesome. Councilor Evans.
Nothing to report right now.
How are you feeling?
I'm getting there.
Sounds like it, yeah.
Councilor McKay.
Yeah, I I got nothing to report. Except I haven't been this sick for a few years.
Oh, no. Oh, my.
I think it's, I didn't do a COVID test, like, because it's not in my chest, but it's headache behind the eyeballs and chills and uh, it's not good.
No. Well, you take care.
Anyhow, nothing to report.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying on.
That's for me.
Um, other than the uh Breathe and Weave Health Summit, I've uh actually attended. Um, planning meetings, uh, and in person usually and enjoy those immensely and also. Uh, implementation committee, which is a is a partnership coming out of the Rural Health Network as well as a Rural Health. Network meeting, so I do those all by Zoom and and those are, those are meetings that I that I. And I've done the two sewer and water tour and I can't remember if the fire department tour was in there too, someone.
Okay, um, for me, it's it's been busy, I I have been away, but I I attended the um. Uh, Interior Health Mayor Roundtable, which, and I think I sent over you the presentation from us, really informative and a bit about decriminalizing drugs and that as well, so. Um, some tidbits from that, uh, attended the CSRD cow as well as the CSRD board meeting. Uh, tidbits out of there, CSRD tipping fees for some items will be increased. Um, things like mattresses and. And stuff like that, fun stuff, um. And let's see, what else, where else have I been, I've been on several meetings, I don't have my. So anyway, I have been busy as well and um, yeah, so staying attached and staying informed and all of us, you know, we still communicate even though we're not sitting here, we're all. We're all busy with our fingers and in something. So, um, yes, so do we have any people in the gallery that have any questions? Because we have fifteen minutes, if anyone is interested in the gallery to ask some questions. Now is your opportunity. Do we have any? Anyone online?
Nope.
Do you have any questions or?
Oh, your worship, it should play a reading, the newspaper, like, having these meetings, so.
Awesome.
Thanks for being here, Ralph.
Thank you. No one? All right. Okay, so it is three o'clock, so we are going to, um, again. Not recessing, I'm adjourned.
Right.
Uh, recommendation at the committee of pool meeting for January eighth, twenty twenty three, be adjourned at three oh two, mover? Thank you. Councilor Evans, Councilor Bushell, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Go off.
Thank you.